That's what I did.
Andrew's gonna be ten minutes later.
I can't learn that rice doesn't. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call to order this meeting of the town council and begin with any announcements that someone has. I'm, I do not have any to pass along. Very good. Next item is the approval of minutes of May nineteenth meeting.
Let's approve May nineteenth, May twenty-two, town council meeting unless anybody wants to pull anything for discussion or corrections.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is department head reports. We have reports from the clerk, the police chief, the fire chief, the finance director, the administrator, and the assessor. If I might, before we perhaps deal with these collectively, we declared a cup at our last meeting, a public safety week. And I'd just like to extract a couple of data points from the two public safety reports. The police chief report for May twenty-two cited nine hundred and fifty-two calls responded to. The fire department report totaled eighty-three calls for service, of which we ended up with forty-six rescue calls. I say that only to reemphasize to the town the significance of our very small, yet agile, public safety departments. And that's not, that speaks nothing to the town hall work represented by the clerk, the finance director, the administrator, and the assessor. I would entertain a motion to place these reports on file.
Motion to place all the department head reports on file for the month of May twenty-twenty-two unless anybody else wants to comment on them?
Any discussion or comment? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is old business, and it is the review of the work of the Charter Review Commission. The chair is here with us this evening, and I, and one other member is with us.
Carol, do you have copies for that? We're on it. No, I'll get it. We're on it.
Down, down on the table.
Okay.
Let me just say.
Chief, give me one, too. I, I was going over mine today. I don't know what I did with it. Thank you, sir.
If there are any other people in attendance who would like to look at the recommendations of the Charter Review Commission, they're available in paper form.
Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, let me express my appreciation to the commission for their work. And I would ask the chair, would you like to lead us through this? Would you like me to, to go through the recommendations? How, what's your, what's your preference, sir? All right. Great. Thank you. Well, if Jack or Mike has questions or clarifications that they can offer, we'll look for that. The, the package of information is before you that the Charter Review Commission, just to reemphasize, every four years, we commission such an entity as a town that, that group then considers the entire charter and looks for the opportunity or the necessity for change. So we'll, we'll move our way through these. They're in numerical order by the charter. The first section is section one oh three, in which the current language is to be modified as follows. Section one oh three concerns town property and speaks to the fact that the town may acquire property within or without its corporate limits. There is a phrase in that, in that language that says that, that the town may sell, mortgage exchange, hold, manage, et cetera, or do any other actions with real property, and they shall, every one of those and every one of those actions shall be approved by the financial town meeting. The Charter Review Commission recommends that we exclude the parenthetical phrase that says this. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Real property shall, and this is the phrase that's to be excluded by their recommendation, exclusive of acquisitions by the Little Compton Agricultural Conservancy Trust as here, hereafter set forth. That with that exclusion, all others are to be approved by the financial town meeting. The argument that, the rationale that the Charter Review Commission has made is that the Ag Trust is not subject to the provisions of section one oh three. Therefore, that phrase is unnecessary, extraneous, whatever term you might apply. Questions on that? Recognize that our, our job as council is to then act on these recommendations and send them forward. Here.
It's just removing a redundant phrase. It doesn't really need to be there.
That is the position of the, of the Charter Review Commission. All right, the second one then is. Yes. Sure. No, I think it would be best if we did it in, in sequence. Mr. Anderson. Okay, that's fair. Thank you. If you wish to speak, then please go to the lectern so that we can do that.
So my name is Larry Anderson. And in this case, again, I would like to repeat what I said at the last meeting. I, I don't think that it's wise or necessary to remove this language, which has been in the charter since its inception. The argument offered here is that the LCAT is not subject to the provisions of section one oh three. That's sort of a circular argument on the, I mean, that's, if you take it out, that becomes ambiguous. If you leave it in, it's not ambiguous. But my argument is that there's a reason this has been here that goes back to disputes and, and issues going back about thirty years, at the very same time the charter was being adopted. And I just disagree with the assertion that's been made, that I've heard made at the Charter Review Commission that was made at the last meeting, that the, that the Agricultural Conservancy Trust, because their deeds are not in the name of the town, but in the name of the Agricultural Conservancy Trust, that these are not town properties. The, I'll just read it as an example from a deed. It's the deed for development rights for the, for the vineyard. Agricultural Conservancy Trust is a grantee, and it's described as an agency of the town of Little Compton and its successors are assigned and designated as a governmental unit under section one seven O B one A V of the Internal Revenue Code. That's important because that's the basis, I believe, I'm not a lawyer, by which the Agricultural Conservancy Trust becomes tax exempt. That is, it falls within the town's authority to receive donations, which then become charitable donations. It's not a five oh one C three. It's not a separate organization, as say the Nature Conservancy is, or the Secundary Preservation Association is, which receives their tax exempt status because they're a separate entity. In this case, the reason they have that is because, because it's a, it's a municipal unit. That's the basis for its tax exemption. I could go, I've got along this, I won't go. Excuse me. Excuse me. At what point?
The very last sentence, you said it is different because it is not, unlike those other two.
It's, it's not a five oh one C three. It's, it falls under a different section of the Internal Revenue Service Code for the purpose of receive donors getting tax deduction, tax deductions for their donations of land or stock or money. The town audit describes Agricultural Conservancy as a component unit of the town over which the, I don't have the exact language, over the, which the town can exert its authority, its financial authority. There's a whole list. It's created by town meeting vote. The, the money's in the, in the, in the, under the authority by law of the, of the town treasury. The tax is collected by the town. I've got twenty, it's subject to the Open Meetings Act. There's a dozen reasons why it's not a, it's not a separate corporation. It's not list, it's not an LLC. It's not a separate partnership. It's a, it's a town entity which just has a different name. So I don't, I don't think it's wise or necessary. I think taking this out will lead to, could lead to more confusion in the future than leaving it in. Leaving the language as is. My, my, my only other suggestion for this is the one I offered last time, is that I do think this should be amended by adding at the very end, where it says, "All these transactions shall be approved by the financial town meeting." I think it should, the word should be added, "Be approved by the financial town meeting," or a special town meeting, which would go partway to addressing the housing trust concerned about the timeliness of approval because, and it would also be a benefit to the town council and other town agencies who might wish to seek approval for a land transaction at some other time of year during the financial town meeting, which is a different legal entity. And I believe, you may have observed, not necessarily observed this, I believe that some invocations of section one oh three by the town council in the past have taken place under special town meetings, which may happen to have been concurrent with financial town meetings. So that's, I just don't think that change is necessary to remove this. I think it would add to confusion rather than eliminate it. Thank you.
Thanks. That, I'd ask for, is there a purpose that would supersede that argument?
Well, we disagree with Larry.
Sir? Yeah, thank you.
We've, you know, Larry's been very helpful in our discussions of the charter going through on a number of points. On this one, we just disagreed. The agricultural trust preceded the charter. We don't believe that, while the towns certainly interconnected, their funding comes through, you know, the sale of property here in, in town. But we don't believe that the purchase of property is, needs to be approved by the financial town meeting. That's why we have suggested striking it from, from that point. And as it relates to the, well, I think that's basically it.
So were we to not approve this and leave the language as it is, is it the Charter Review Commission's opinion that we are unnecessarily burdening? Or, or is there some, is there some negative impact that occurs by leaving it in?
I, I probably don't speak for the, not that I disagree, but they're not all here. And I'd invite Michael if he has a comment on it. I personally don't believe it burdens the agricultural trust. They've existed under this, that their properties don't come in front of the financial town meeting than funding issues, you know, the, the purchases that happen. It sets up a little bit of a conflict which we got into this, that they're not, they're not burdened by the timing of what is the financial town meeting. And I know there could be special town meetings and like, the housing trust is burdened by the timing of the financial town meeting because their scenario is any, the way it's written right now, that any property that comes up as part of the town's housing plan needs to be approved. So they miss that, that date. It sets up yet another hurdle. You know, they don't have anywhere near the, the, you know, the bank account that the agricultural trust does. So I think it's, it's just, it's just clear to not have that there because it's excluding something that doesn't need to be excluded. And so it's, if our charter was to clarify and update, the same's like that. A way to do it.
Thank you. While, while you're up there.
Yeah.
On the last sentence, it says lease of real property shall, and then you deleted part of it. Then it says be approved by the financial town meeting. Should we put in there, or by special town meeting? In case something comes up in the middle of the year that we have to act upon?
Well, we've sort of suggested that as it relates to a, a possible acquisition or opportunity with the, maybe not with that exact language, Gary, but with, for the housing trust.
Right.
That, that's kind of where we were going with that. This one, so we addressed it in seven ten on the housing trust where we.
Okay, so somewhere in there, it's, we can call a special town meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Or special town meeting or a meeting of the town council.
We, we weren't planning on getting away from a meeting of the town council. And our feeling is, or thought, or belief is that the town council can call a special town meeting whenever they'd like to.
Might I suggest that we delay action on this particular element? It happens to be chronologically the first one. But we return to it after we've gone through the rest and come back to this one. I think the others, to some extent, are more straightforward. And perhaps then we can roll this up at the, at the end of the process, if that meets with the council's agreement.
Sure.
All right. Thank you. Any other arguments?
The only suggestion I had on that, and I, I know there's quite a few in here, but to make sure we get what we want, if we voted on each one of them separately to approve, then we can vote on the whole package at the end again or.
All right. No problem with that. Sure.
So.
I don't.
I mean, if you want to come back to one oh three and go through the rest of it, the rest of them are pretty well self-explanatory. I don't see big problems except for the housing trust.
Right. I think it would be helpful to do the housing trust discussion and then return to these two discussions.
Okay.
And they appear to me to be the two that have the most, they are less editorial in nature and more philosophical in nature, if I can say it that way.
Okay.
That's probably a damning by faith praise, but anyway.
So I mean, do you think that it, okay, we're going up to two oh four. The only difference is for one half hour for no less than fifteen minutes. If we vote on these, and just get them out of the way and then go back to one oh three and seven, I think seven ten.
All right.
Would you want to do it that way?
That.
I mean, it's up to the rest of the council.
Let's, let's consider this one and see what we think. But I would be certainly willing for that to be the way we approach it. Basically, the next item, which is in paragraph two oh four of the charter, is a, is a paragraph that describes how the balloting that's done at the town meeting will be done, including how much of the town meeting after the, the transactions are finished at the meeting will be allowed for voting. And it was on the basis of the fact that the clerk suggested that a timing of fifteen minutes was, was more than sufficient based on our experience for accumulating votes of people who are not there. So basically, what it would then simply strike is the words for one half hour. And the wording would be that voters can, at their convenience, at any time following the opening of the meeting, place for transaction of the town meeting and for no less than fifteen minutes to cast their, for such additional time for all voters to cast their ballots. To determine whether canvassers have to be adjournment of the meeting, that they would have that opportunity. So it simply shortens that period of time to an automatic fifteen, which can be larger if the board of canvassers were to so determine.
It does two things. It, it shortens the timeframe, but also opens it up that if there's an overload, they can keep going. Whereas the other one was absolute. After a half hour, you were done.
Well said. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve that. It's written by the Charter Review Commission.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded then for two oh four, the change to article two oh four to be brought to referendum. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is the date and purpose of the financial town meeting. "To ensure the town has an adequate period of time to meet in the event of extenuating circumstances causing inability to meet during the currently listed timeframe." Currently listed timeframe being a particular period of time in May. The proposed change would say the meeting would take place on any date during the third full week in May, unless due to extenuating circumstances and by vote of approval of the council, that period of time may be extended through the third full week of June. Would give us the opportunity to hold the meeting in a span of forty days or so.
I concur with the Charter Review Commission. I'll make a motion to adopt that.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the change to article three oh one. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item that is recommended is a change to article three oh four, in which the warrant for the meeting is described and how it's noticed and how it's, and what the agenda is. And to properly acknowledge the role of the clerk with respect to the warrant items and include additional source for full text of the warrant. So what the proposal is, there are some type, what's the term? Not typographical. Yeah. Capitalizing meeting. It's, it's, yeah. And it says the warrant for any meeting, whether the annual or a special meeting, that's added, whether the annual or a special, this would apply to both, shall be prepared in the meeting, shall be warned by the town clerk. It specifically names who it is that's going to warn it. As provided by, and I'm presuming that the word law was to have a strike through. So instead of it as provided by law, it would be as provided by relevant provisions of chapter forty-five-three of the Rhode Island General Law, as being more specific as to what caused it to be imposed. Finally, the listing of warrant items may be grouped to be voted on, striking the words moved and, since the point is voting them, as one or more units comprising multiple warrant items, provided however the meeting may be, by majority vote, amend, remove, or vote separately. What I take this as achieving is that common practice has been to group all of the, all of the items. And this emphasizes the fact that a person can say, "I wish to include items six through fourteen," and those could be voted on as a block. Finally, it goes on to say the voters can amend that total amount for any individual item, but may not have been, may not amend individual line items within such a warrant item. It then says, "The budget committee report, as supplied to the electors, shall include a list of warrant items which shall have been determined as described before, pursuant to the provisions of other sections of the charter." The budget, and adds this requirement. "The budget committee report shall also include the committee's recommendations as provided in section five oh two B, as well as any other data, information, or material the committee deems appropriate." A listing of the full text of all warrant items is available on the town website. So it, as the note to the right explains, it acknowledges the role of the clerk and it includes additional source for full text of warrant items. It further clarifies the way in which combinations of items could be proposed.
I'm over this to be adopted as written by the Charter Review Commission.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve this for inclusion. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
I, I, I said the Charter Review Commission for doing this, I, I pose a rigor to this. From my, my own experiences, a number of budget committees at certain times, town moderator and town council. And I think, from my own point of view, this makes the moderator's job easier to clarify for voters what their options are at town meeting. In my experience, it's an ambiguity of the term, I'm not going to handle the group.
Blocks of votes.
And also verify, it's just a matter of evolution over time. One matter of our work has changed over time, so it's not consistent with the plan. It's a lot of numbers. So the vision should be able to vote on the bottom line of what I think of the plan. These should be clarified because it's a state law cases, there's a state law case that would confuse that. So I, I hope I can be approved of this proposal.
So it's drawing attention, your attention to the fact that, that this emphasizes the fact that the vote is about the bottom line, not about the breakout. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Item five oh two is proposed for modification. Two changes there. One of them is a result of our decision to move from an elected town treasurer and tax collector. So that term is struck from the requirement, the budget committee seeks a recommendation from the town council on the compensation for the, what were the two elected officials. Now only one, the town clerk. The second change that's made is instead of to prepare a capital expenditure program, the budget committee's charge with this language would be to review a capital expenditure program for the town pursuant to the provisions of this article five oh five and applicable ordinances. So their role being more clearly defined as a reviewing role rather than a creation. Is there a motion to?
I'll, I'll make the motion to agree with the Charter Review Commission and adopt this, five oh two.
Motion made and seconded for the change to article five oh two as our discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Article five oh three, preparation of the budget. This change is focused on the fact that the path for town officials, department heads, boards, committees, et cetera, that are under the jurisdiction of the council, instead of submitting their budgets to the council, they would submit them to the town administrator upon such date prior to January thirty-first rather than March first, which is when the, the clerk needs for the warrant, the, the numbers. That they would do that through the administrator. And then all such budget requests, as well as any citizen stroke submitted pursuant to article three oh six, would be transmitted to the clerk, uh, by the clerk to the administrator for the purposes of preparing and organizing the budget committee report in coordination with the budget committee as prepared, as provided in section three oh four. The administrator shall assist the budget committee in assembling the budget. So this recognizes a process that we currently use. Actually, we parallel it. We use both. But this would say, this is now the primary, this is the manner in which we submit budgets. For example, the fire department submits its budget to the administrator, not to the council. The council has the opportunity to review that in company with the administrator's forwarding of the total budget.
I agree with the Charter Review Commission on this one. I'll make a motion to town council adopt it.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Signify my saying aye. Article five oh five, the capital program. "The council shall provide by ordinance for the orderly preparation by the administrator of a multi-year program." What currently is described is to, is that that's prepared by the budget committee. In practice, the administrator has in fact done this and has given it to the budget committee for review. This would capture that process. Is there any discussion on that? Or is there a motion to?
Motion to approve this as written by the Charter Review Commission.
Second. Discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Article six oh three describes the town treasurer and tax collector. This is an office which continues to exist. However, it is not an elected position any longer. And in our current incarnation, it's filled by the town finance director. That notwithstanding, what the suggestion is that, in conformance with Rhode Island general law, the town council shall appoint a town treasurer, who shall, at the discretion of the council, also hold and exercise, in conformance with general law forty-four, five, the office of town tax collector. The combined position shall serve until his or her successor is appointed. So it strikes the language that describes it as being one position. So it strikes the language that describes it as being one position and that one position being elected and rather provides for the fact that it, it could be appointed as two different people and goes on to say that the treasurer may appoint a deputy town treasurer with the approval of, and the word council is struck and finance director is substituted. I would, so that's the, the essence of the change here. I would take issue with that in that a deputy town treasurer is a different position within the town with a different salary of, uh, associated with it. So I would prefer that the council have the authority, the, the approval of the council be required in order that a deputy treasurer be appointed.
My, what?
My opinion.
What I had written down was the town treasurer would make a recommendation to the town council on an applicant. And then the town council would interview that applicant for appointment.
Can, can I propose that?
Yeah.
It says that we could say that the town treasurer may propose the appointment of a deputy town treasurer with the approval of the council.
That would be the language that I would prefer, right? And I, I don't know if there was other, some other discussion that you had.
We were just looking forward to a period where he might have an actual. We don't have an issue with that.
What, I, and I've stated this before with other appointments that if somebody in the town hall or somebody that was put in by the town council and they do something they shouldn't be doing or they're rude to somebody. It reflects on the town council and comes back to the town council. They don't tell that person, they tell the town council. Now, I suppose they would tell the finance director if that happened. But as it stands right now, because we appoint those people, then we're the ones that the people come to and say, well, this happened and I, and it has happened. This happened with this person, this happened with this person. So I, I think the town likes to have jurisdiction over that and, and, you know, because it'll come back to us. If somebody has to be let go, it's going to come back to the town council, so.
So the substitute language proposed by Councilor Ariarte Moore is to, the treasurer may, your term was recommend?
Recommend or propose.
Or propose a deputy town treasurer for the, for the approval of the town council?
That's fine.
That, does that capture what you said?
Yes.
All right. With, with that change then.
Motion to approve changes just discussed.
Second.
Motion to adopt.
Seconded. Any further discussion on that item?
You don't need a second for an amendment. You don't need a motion for them. Is there an amendment to that or?
It wasn't an amendment.
Yeah.
That was the book.
Our motion is to adopt it with that language, yeah.
Can, can I just clarify that the, the red comma and who should be struck out in this?
Yes.
Right.
I earlier said.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is, no, no, I, in a different item said that and I believe it was this item to which I intended that to be, so thank you. That's comma who gets struck from that, from that language. All right then, that's the motion. Is there, are you ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is an additional item for Section six oh three. And essentially what it does is implement the rationale by which we chose to hire a finance director instead of a treasurer and removes all of the contingent language that follows. So what it basically says now, or would say now, is the town council may by ordinance make provision for the assumption of duties by the town treasurer, tax collector, by the town finance director.
Motion to adopt as written by the Charter Review Commission.
Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. The tax assessors as described in Article six oh five. Once again, the Charter Review Commission has recognized or has implemented a recognition of the current structure of a single appointed tax assessor and an appointed tax assessment board of review. So the interim language that says when you do this, here's how it'll unfold, acknowledges that the town council has by ordinance made provision for replacement of the board of assessors with a single tax assessor. And that a tax assessment board of review, is that the same article? No, sorry. So that's Article six oh five. And in essence says, this is what the council did do and therefore this is how we operate now.
Motion to approve as written by the Charter, motion to adopt as written by the Charter Review Commission.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then on to Article six oh six, which again anticipated the fact that if this happened, the board of tax assessors would become the board of tax assessment, the tax assessment board of review. We are now being given a proposal that says there shall be a tax assessment board of review consisting of three members appointed by the council, served for six years. Very similar to the process by which the zoning board of review is, is set up.
Motion to adopt as written by the Charter, Charter Review Commission.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Then Article six twelve, a new section due to this often mentioned town finance director position. A, a paragraph describing that person's responsibilities. Employed by the council from among persons having had prior training, experience in financial management, et cetera. At the discretion of the council, duties of the finance director may include those specified in six oh three for the treasurer, tax collector, and any other additional duties set by the council.
Motion to adopt as written by the Charter Review Commission.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then Article seven ten.
Bob, can we skip over this one?
Sure.
And finish off the rest of them, please.
Sure. Good suggestion. Article nine oh one, the police department. The term was added to the description of the chief of police position and what governs that position. It formally said, subject to applicable provisions of state law. And it's, and the commission's suggestion is that we incorporate term and town ordinances.
Motion to adopt as written by the Charter Review Commission.
Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
And then the description of the fire department in Article nine oh two removes the description that implies that rules and regulations of the department, which our own ordinances say are the purview of the chief, removes those from here, from the charter. And says the, instead of the fire chief shall, subject to the approval of the council, make rules and regulations concerning operation department, conduct of members. It reflects a higher level description. The fire chief shall be the chief administrative officer of the department and the final departmental authority in all manners of policy, operation, discipline, subject to the applicable provisions of state law and town ordinances.
Motion to adopt as written by the Charter Review Commission.
Second.
Discussion on that.
Can you amend, just?
Yeah.
It's very small, but I think town should be capitalized. Just to.
Got it. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now you have asked that we return to Article seven ten and then presumably we would return to Article one oh three to merge those.
That, that was my, I concur with that. That was my suggestion to do that. That way, all the rest of them are out of the way. We don't have to worry about it. And I think after we get through this, we should vote on this one and then one oh three. And I don't know if it's going to be redundant, but just to, to make sure we did everything right, just make a recommendation to approve the whole thing with changes or whatever you want.
Right.
I just suggest when we make that final one where you're going to do a blanket.
Yes.
Clarify that what you're actually doing tonight is accepting the proposal to be referred to the board of canvases for certification to be included on the ballot in November because nowhere in any of your motions have you said that, so that needs to be clarified.
Right. We're accepting these into a bucket and then that, that set of, of recommendations would be forwarded through the board of canvases. That'll be our final motion. All right. Article seven ten is proposed by the commission to be changed to reflect. See, I best. Let's look at the rationale. Freeing the housing trust from the restrictions of Section one oh three, the one that we debated at some length earlier, allows the trust to act on real estate acquisition in a timely manner and delegating oversight to the council maintains checks on the trust's use of town funds. Now, so what is suggested is that the language that exists currently, which describes what the housing trust can do, ends with that Little Compton Housing Trust shall be subject to the provisions of Section one oh three. The proposal is to change that to with the approval of the town council, the Little Compton Housing Trust shall not be subject to the provisions of Section one oh three.
I'll make a movement, make a move to adopt that as written by the Charter Review Commission.
I'll second that.
Yes, I, I just want to point out that this is contrary to what we just approved, in my estimation, at the twenty twenty-two financial town meeting. We gave authority to the housing trust without reference to the town council, is my recollection. Not for the what? We see the implementation with the approval of the council, housing trust shall not be subject to the provisions of Section one oh three.
The, the, the budget committee report, the change to the report really only affects the spending out of the housing trust fund and not.
Understood.
Not in relation to.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah. Yes, please go ahead.
So I, I am totally sympathetic to the concerns of the housing trust about the current provision of Section one oh three with regard to timeliness. If they have to seek approval at a financial town meeting, which technically is, is once a year, that, that is a hindrance. But I think the real issue here really is whether the housing trust should be treated the same way as the agricultural conservancy trust in terms of just being exempt from the, the requirement for town meeting approval for properties. That's the, that's the fundamental issue, I believe, that's not being addressed by this. I, I recall I attended the meetings when this housing trust ordinance was adopted and Attorney Tites, who drafted this, that was his intent. I've looked at the minutes since, but the town council amended the, the proposed, amended the, the the housing trust inclusion in the charter in that year. I was on the charter, commission at that time to include this Section one oh three provision. So I, I think that I'm totally sympathetic to the housing trust being concerned about having the flexibility to act. I will point out that my, my other proposal to amend Section one oh three to add special town meetings would give them time to act at any time of year, but by means of special town meeting. If this were not changed. So that, that's one way to, to address at least part of that issue. The other thing is that the, the language of this, I believe, is not at all clear. And that it, in practice, could add an additional hurdle to the housing trusts. Because all it does is say that with the approval of the town council, the Little Compton Housing Trust shall not be subject to the provisions of Section one oh three of the charter. So the housing trust could face two hurdles rather than one for a transaction. That is, they go to the council and all that's granted for the, the council here is to decide whether or not the housing trust shall be subject to one oh three. They might say, we don't think you're subject. I guess that would mean that they could go right into the transaction. But if a council says, no, you're subject to it, then they've had to go to the council and then go to the town meeting anyway. So the way this is set up is that this is discretionary and remains discretionary. And it's not clear, it doesn't say that the council shall, it doesn't say proactively, positively, that the council shall approve housing trust transactions. It merely gives them the authority to decide whether Section one oh three applies. And so it doesn't say whether that applies to every transaction or whether the council, a council could give a blanket transaction, uh, exemption which the next council might choose to overturn. So I, I don't think this, I think this creates more uncertainty for the housing trust rather than less. And I do think as much as I, and I, I promoted the access to their funds, which they haven't had. I'm hoping that in the near future, the housing trust will have the means to come up with its own proposal based on additional research as to what they think they need, they need in terms of this. So I, I think this is premature and I think it's problematic and that it could create more problems for the housing trust in the future than it would resolve. Thank you.
I, I have a question for the Charter Review Commission. Was the intent behind this to ask the housing trust to go before the council with every acquisition of property? Or was it, what, what was the intent behind changing this language? Because I think, I think Larry does bring up a couple of good points as to what.
The intent was to remove the constraint of the financial town meeting ability of the housing trust to purchase property. Including the, the town, the town council can propose.
Supposed to be a period.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
One oh three, or you want seven ten?
It just doesn't mandate that the housing trust go before.
I haven't updated it, so I'm assuming.
Mm-hmm.
So just to add that Andrew, at the present, the opportunity to, yeah, to, uh, access funds to purchase something has to be approved of the financial town. In this, uh, reason, in this, uh, window, I am asking someone to, uh, your, your, I know you recall a special town meeting. And, and, and rest of, and all of that. We'd better, it's clear to say there's an opportunity, it's out of cycle service fee. Uh, you can come before the council, uh, and call a special town meeting, it's a clean bidding. They can have a decision and then.
Okay.
So would the council have the authority to approve any housing, housing trust acquisitions? Or will we still have to go to a special fini- financial town? And that's, that's the way I'm reading it because special fini- financial town meetings, to call them, aren't, aren't three hundred bucks or five hundred bucks. There's a lot of work that goes into it. And if anybody knows how important the financial town meeting is, which I'm a big beholder of our financial town meetings. But when, when our financial town meeting comes and we only get a hundred and eight, twenty-eight people, we need a hundred and fifty-five. How many people are going to come to a financial, special financial town meeting to approve funds? So if it doesn't show up, what are we going to keep having financial town meetings at a cost to the town? Are we just going to say, well, we couldn't call a financial town meeting, we couldn't have a vote, so that's got to go by the wayside? You've got a council that's here represented by the people of the town, put in to represent the views of the town, what the town wants. I think we're very well capable of approving something like that. And I don't see why anybody on this council would, would say, well, no, we've got this property that's going to be given to us. We're going to get it for half the money because these people want to see housing done. I don't think anybody on this council is going to say no. But I do think it's going to be a hard situation and costly to call a special financial town meeting. So, u- under that, I would, I would agree with. So, u- under that, I would, I would agree with the proposal written by the Charter Review Commission.
May I ask a question of clarification, Gary? Perhaps you can answer, perhaps Jack can. The council right now cannot buy land without financial town meeting approval.
Right.
At town council. Then how can the town council grant authorization of the, of, of the housing trust to avoid the trip to the financial town meeting? So, you can give the exemption to the housing trust, but you can't give it to yourselves? That, that's, that's the, so I, I think Larry raised a, an issue. I, I, I think Jack and his team have done a great job of bringing this to, this topic to the forefront. But so the only, of the three entities, the only person, the only group that can't purchase property without financial town meeting now would be the town council. Of the three entities, the ag trust, the housing trust, and the town council itself, if this is passed, essentially, the only, the two groups that can buy property without town meeting approval, the housing trust and the ag trust. But the one group that cannot purchase property without town meeting approval is the town council.
But actually, that makes sense, because the town council is funded by taxpayer money, where the housing trust and the ag trust is funded by money that is different than taxpayer, than direct taxpayer money. So, yes, that would actually make sense, that the only entity that would be exempt from financial town meeting would be the taxpayer.
Michael, you're, you're thinking far down the road, unlike me, and correctly, you're thinking far down the road. But as I understand it, one of the sources of the housing trust money has to do, comes from building permit, increase. So, so that's taxpayer money, I think.
Sort of, that's individual fees. It's dependent assessment or, so, just, I think what both of these, one oh three and seven ten, need a, a, an accurate, thoughtful, legal decision to be able to determine what that language is applying to and what that, what we're referring to with those entities of the Little Compton Housing Trust and the Little Compton Agricultural Conservancy Trust. What are they as an entity?
I agree, a- and one of the cleaner aspects, and that's, I don't mean that term, the more simplified aspects of the ag trust is they're buying land. You know, obviously, we like upkeep and stewardship, et cetera. Th- th- this may be buying buildings and, and that's going to require property manager, upkeep, et cetera, of a different scale.
Now, you're thinking about, so, you're, that is, that's the prevalence of the, of the housing trust as part of it. So, when, if the housing trust purchases a property, who is going to be the new owner
Who, who's going to receive it?
Who's going to actually, whose name will be on the deed for that property that's acquired by Little Compton Housing Trust?
That, that I don't know. I, I know at the beginning of the trust, ag trust, it, it was considered it would go to the town. I think Larry's pointed out that the ag trust on, on some element is controlled by the town on so, on some level.
But for example, I were going to, somehow, I had an issue with the agricultural trust property.
Right.
And I wanted to sue.
Right.
Who am I going to sue? The agricultural trust?
You, you sue them both, frankly.
Sue them, that's my point.
Yep, you sue the town and, and the, so.
But, but that can be decided in court, whether the town is a, a holder of that property or that that lawsuit is really applied to the agricultural trust. So, what I'm trying to understand and define, so that we can allow the charter, is what are those two entities as a town hall clearly property of the little trust?
Right.
The range of, you know, so those things are clearly defined, but housing trust has its charter and has its inception in upstate, as the word is used to say, and, and does the agricultural trust. So, for us as a town charter, are they, are they mandated by your own entities or are they part of the town governance?
I believe the latter, part of the town governance.
I know what you believe. I would like to have, I would like to have like a, a legal decision.
Okay.
That would define whether those entities are, so that the charter could be accurate in its description of how to manage those two entities.
I, I agree with Larry's previous example, that they are an agency of the town.
We are the agricultural trust.
Oh, yeah, very much so. How, how a lot of this happened is, remember, the ag trust, we started to finance it with a two percent real estate tax. And we were saying, we're going to put our pennies aside and eventually, sooner or later, there'd be enough money to buy something.
Right. It's not included in the general fund.
Pardon me?
It's not a part of the general fund.
No.
The general fund, it's, uh.
It, it was at one time, because there was, there was a lawsuit against the treasurer about that.
Currently, or it was, but it is now, is that the money is not held in the general fund.
That's because it wasn't being released from the treasurer. So, we had to straighten out that, that hiccup. More importantly, as the funders now say, and, and, and I, I'm not speaking for DEM, the Champagne Foundation, or anyone like that, but when they say, look, we're going to give you this USDA money, but we're going to put it under the name of the ag trust because we have to enforce what we told you. There are certain conditions that you've agreed. If you accept this money to purchase some property on, on the West Main Road, we've got to have, be able to enforce that. That's why the trust name is on there, because if the USDA wants to sue someone, they'll sue the trust, because the town council might say, oh, we, we didn't agree to that. So, that's how it came. Is funding is why it's in the names.
We, I guess, I would, I, I like to think that I'm a very agreeable person, and, but I, I really like what I've been there for a long time, very much. But I disagree with both. I believe both of these things are set up as independent entities, you and I. Our, our simple mission is to provide flexibility to the housing trust, move forward on opportunities to provide affordable housing for the elderly, for this franchise as well, for the income of people, and to do it, I mean, it's, it's set up now to have a funding, not much funds. They have one time a year where they, where they can decide and look forward. Totally hear Larry, Carol and I talk, you know, about just differently to get into the court with the financial town meeting, just, he moves it, he's calling it. At the very least, I like the opportunity, we'd like, and, to come to the town council, should it be, as I say, one of sight, and if there is an opportunity, I've been, when I talk to the cost of the financial town meeting, to come to the town council and we talk about zonuses, should, we're not trying to get away from the hearing, we're not trying to get away from a vote for the financial town meeting. And very, I, I like the opportunity of the town council having the opportunity to decide whether we should call a financial town meeting, we should call it here, not we should call something to take advantage of something that seemed to work to the path. And if our hurdle plan is, okay, we've got a hundred and fifty-eight people, I'd rather deal with that opportunity, you've got a hundred and fifty-eight people, on subject to a number of people attached, people who are within the stance. I'd rather try to get to that hurdle and be ready to do it, if that's what, you know, Dick, if we want to, if we go forward in a proper way, and if there's not a way to find an answer other than a special financial town meeting.
Let me respond to that. I, I've raised the issue. I don't, I'm not telling the council not to vote. I want the issue out there. And I, and I, and I, by modifying my initial concern, that's because Jack has convinced me of that opportunity.
Well, in it, it does say, with, with the approval of the town council, Little Compton Housing Trust shall not be subject to provisions of section one oh three. So, they, they got to come to the council and we say, no, I think this is such a big situation, we're going to have to have a special fina- financial.
That's a, that's a good safety valve.
Okay, we're going to have to have a financial town meeting, is what we're going to need. And that it puts onus on the council to get that ball rolling instead of the housing trust.
Yes, sir.
If, if you're wondering, if you're wondering about the language of, 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 proposed by the, by the housing trust, I, and the suspension has to be, it seems like a, a immediate suspension, but it's been suggested several times that the council, under this language, could, could decide whether the housing trust would then have to go to a, a, two terms, a financial town meeting or a special town meeting. Section one oh three always has financial town meeting. If you're going to give the council the, the opportunity to exercise discretion to speed things up, then you have to amend section one oh three to add a special town meeting too.
And that's what I suggested at the beginning. And then somebody said, well, it was in seven oh two, so I think it should be in both.
I, I would just point out that the, that decision is going to be a political decision. So, you're, you're potentially giving two tracks of political choice, one by the council and one by the housing trust, whether to put a project. So, it doesn't necessarily reduce the hurdles of the housing.
But it does put it on a much faster scale.
Not necessarily.
Well, if somebody comes in and said, we're going to get a house given to us, the town, the, the, the town council can probably say, yeah, that's a good idea, we're going to allow that, instead of waiting to get a special financial town meeting, when it doesn't have to, where, where the town's not spending any funding, why wouldn't it, why wouldn't the town want that?
Because they, they, another town council might not.
Well, then the charter will have to be changed at that time.
Yeah, I'll just say, it doesn't necessarily have to.
Right.
I, I beg you to amend section one oh three. In, in any scenario.
I agree with that.
Yeah. I just have one more.
Yeah, sure.
Just to, to, to bring back my question before, I'm totally with the spirit of this. I think that, you know, conversations I've had with the housing trusts at past meetings, this is somewhat in the direction that we want to go. So, thank you for taking this on. My, my question remains, for every acquisition, would the housing trust have to come to the council? Or is it like a blanket approval, not to have to go to town meeting or a special financial town meeting?
I would think that every, for every acquisition, they would have to go to the council.
I agree with that.
I don't see, I don't see any scenario where they wouldn't go to the council. It may be, as I said, maybe a simple guess. And to know, we would want to create a hearing or a special town meeting, because without questions about the, the, the thing, but I, you know, as, as our representative of the city, that we did, we're not political, we're accustomed, US elected officials to guide us through this process, we're going to have that ball rolling. And so, yes, I do think that any acquisition should be watched with counsel.
And I, I, I agree with the, the council should be involved, um, because what, what about the peripheral costs? They buy a rental unit, now all these other peripheral costs kick in, then that really falls on the council's responsibility if the ag trust, excuse me, if the housing trust isn't paying for that, the town's paying for it somehow, the council's going to agree to that anyway. How, how can they, if they buy a rental property, who pays the maintenance?
That, that's all in the housing trust. It's in the bond homes and.
Well, I still think we, we could be, we could be asked for money. We, we could be asked for money.
So, I did make the motion on this.
Yeah, as, as written.
And so, if we, if we pass this, I guess this is a question for Dick, does the council have the authority to do this if this were passed?
Do they have the authority to do it? Right now, they do, yeah. A- and it's, it, if, if it's passed, I think they would be able to have, so the housing trust comes, this is what we'd like to buy, probably in executive session, because acquisitions have fallen to that, that, that exemption, negative, we, we realize this is a sensitive matter, go forward. Now, some, some critic says, wait, wait, didn't, didn't you need a financial town meeting? But, and so I think the safety valve is, if it's a significant acquisition, yeah, sure. But I, 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 I think we, we have faith in the council to be able to make that decision.
Sort of, are, are, are you suggesting Gary did the, your center and then the, the program of the financial, uh, town meeting or special town meeting?
Yeah, I'll, let's, let's just. I think your motion was with seven ten.
Yeah, let's just go with seven ten, because that's what the motion deal was. Then we're going to come back to one oh three, and I think that's the only language that that's going to need. That was my original suggestion.
So, your motion, to be clear, is to adopt the specific language proposed for seven ten for referral to the Board of Canvassers to adopt this, that language as described for Article seven ten?
Yes.
And is that motion seconded?
I seconded it.
All right, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, reference back to Article one oh three, the, it appears to me there are two things outstanding. One is to append to the very last sentence, be approved by the financial town meeting or a special financial town meeting, the acquisition of property. The other fundamental question is, do we or do we not retain the exclusivity of the ag trust in its acquisitions?
I think if we, if we were to retain the exclusivity of the ag trust, then we would have to include this, something about the housing trust at this point, to be consistent. But we're.
Except that we have just agreed that the housing trust may not do what this article describes without reference to the town council.
Exactly, which is why I'm saying, if we were to keep in the exclusivity of the ag trust, we would probably have to, I, I, I'm agreeing with the, the, um, the recommendation
With the, with the addition of special financial town.
With, with the addition of special financial town meeting as written here on.
Is that your, is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion, just as long as it, or a special financial town meeting is added at the end, which is going to happen.
So, we're going with the language, the only, we're going with the strike and/or a special town meeting?
That's correct.
Special financial town meeting.
Financial financial town meeting.
The, the proposal would, would be referred to the Board of Canvassers with the additional phrase, or special financial town.
You, you illustrate.
By special town meeting, excuse me.
No, or, right.
Not, not financial. Or not. The word financial.
Special town, that's what I had originally, special town meeting.
Yep. All right, the financial town meeting or special town meeting? All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. Aye.
Okay, just to be clear, we're going to approve the Charter Commission's recommendation with language changes that were approved tonight, send it to the Board of Canvassers for certification and then go to placement on the ballot. As amended, as amended.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded, a comprehensive motion that assembles all of the aforementioned changes.
Right.
And moves that to the Board of Canvassers and then on to the ballot. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you for the.
Thank you very much for the work. The challenge now will be to have, whatever this is, thirteen items, or whatever number it is, comprehensible to the average citizen who didn't have the opportunity to spend sixty, seventy minutes in this conversation. But that's, I'm sure, within your purview, because you've done such.
I'm sure you, you got to a lot of questions.
I got, I do, before we get off this subject, I do have one thought. I got, I do, before we get off this subject, I do have one thought. And it doesn't have to go in this charter, charter changes, but thinking about us only having a hundred twenty-eight people show up when there should have been a hundred fifty-five. I'd like either on this one or some, something in the future, and as I say, I don't wanna do with a, way with a financial town meeting. But when all of us work so hard to put a budget together and we don't get a quorum down there, and we have to wait forty-five minutes before we can take our first vote. I think at some point in the future, if, if within a half an hour, we can't get the quorum, the council sitting at that time can approve the budget. So, I mean.
You still have to knock down, you just kick the can down the road, Gary.
Okay, well, we can kick the can down the road, cause I'm a very, very wanna keep our financial town meeting. I think it's something that's, I wish the whole country would, but sometimes you, you get a referendum and the town council just says, okay, this is what it is. And a lot of people disgusted about that. So I don't want that to happen in Little Compton. But I also feel real bad when people put all this time in and because the budget is so good, well, that budget looks good, I don't have to go. No, you have to go, it's your town, you have to go to approve it. So that'd be something, I guess, for the next charter.
Well, Gary, it's the right, it was responsible, you spoke, we had a good session with Carol and Michael. Yeah, very quickly, we couldn't agree with it more. You know, the five percent threshold of ones is something that seemed like an important one. I know that, um, and so where we came away was, just sort of going down the road, was we need to be citizens, we need to be more involved in using some of the tools. Things that I suggested, as many of my suggestions, Gary, I just, you know, I don't know what's, I can't do.
We, we've all been there, Jack, we've all been there.
You know, I mean, using.
I don't know what they're talking about.
Police chief's telephone, but using, uh, you know, I mean, I think we have to work harder before that, the, to get the. You know, cause when you call people out over their pajamas.
Right.
You know, I mean, I think it'd be easier, so I, it's neat, and I volunteered to, to help them. It's just, I think if we do a better job of alerting, I know it's on, you know, the, the ballot or the budget thing that goes around, I know, but it's, I think we need to do something different.
Okay.
And, and, I completely, I hope, Karen had suggested some, uh, of the town that advertised financial town meeting, some kind of, uh, simple.
Well.
We kinda felt that if we put that in the charter, let's have one more row.
Okay.
To improve the.
Yeah, we have some portable, uh, electronic signs that would be useful for that, thank you.
Yeah, that's right, we can use the police signs.
Our administration suggested the language of the sign, the sign was to say, your taxes are going up twenty times.
Come vote.
Tuesday night at seven o'clock.
How about free beer?
Oh, boy.
Yes, sir. I just observed that this is an unusual year because for the first time in three hundred plus years, we had gone without a live council meeting, a town meeting for a couple of years.
Yeah.
And some people, uh, told, it's a muscle yoga exercise, and to a point there, it can, it can happen pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Uh, but we, uh, so, and then some people were so cautious about that. So I think we shouldn't be guided by this year, when we did in fact get a quorum, forty-five minutes in the course of four years is not ideal, I think, with the effort we made. So, you know, I, we all, sometimes it took us ten minutes, but we always made it to get that five percent quorum, which we should be proud of. We have the highest, what, we have the highest percentage of law that we're getting town meetings of any municipalities in Rhode Island.
Agrees.
It's, it's, it's not that high bar, we all, we, we have a responsibility, as, as we suggested, to remind our, uh, citizens to show up. Because if we don't show up, that's the day the other people are gonna show up and raise your taxes. What, how appropriate when you want to support.
Fair enough.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you for that effort. My next item of business is to authorize the administrator to receive bid proposals to upgrade the alarm system in town hall to a system that radio transmits alarms to public safety complex. I, uh, solicit a motion to approve, including award to the most responsive and responsible bidder.
Second.
Discussion on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next is to appoint Donald T. Gomez, who with his wife is present with us, to serve on the Wilbur Woods stakeholder committee.
Motion to approve.
Discussion.
Can I?
Thank you, Donald.
Yeah, thank you for, for submitting your name. Is there any intention behind this? Did we have someone come off the committee or?
We did not.
No, we just, um, another engineer and one area.
Yeah, we're, we are, um, uh, appoint, or I'm proposing that we appoint somebody who has, uh, CRMC experience and, uh, the associated capability to a committee that needs such a, needs such a person on it. It's not a vacancy that's being filled.
And there's no, there's no, we didn't set how big the committee could be in the CRMC background that could help us. CRMC actually ends as one group, but everything that happens in Wilbur Woods dumps in to CRMC again. So we're trying to make some coordination and be a good connection.
So I'm just curious, as you know, um, not, not about the applicant, but about the, um, the Wilbur Woods, uh, committee. I did, just did a little research, I know you guys formed it in twenty nineteen, I think Andrew, you were a part of that. So there's no standing committee, it's more of an ad hoc, there's no ordinance to it, uh, it's not in the charter or a state law. Uh, there's no terms, uh, for the members, uh, there's no limit on the members, and what I found out is the town administrator, uh, is the one who picks the members. Am I correct in that?
Picks the board?
The members, chooses the members.
We, we appoint the members, the council appoints the members.
The council does?
Yeah.
So we've appointed members before?
All of, all of the members that are currently on.
So maybe the minutes I, I read were, were, uh, I didn't read them accurately then.
There may have been a time that they suggested that, but it's always been the town council that makes the.
Right, I, I think we had asked the administrator to come back to the council with a list of applicants.
Yeah, that's right.
Everybody replied, we put on it.
Yeah, this.
And someone did.
And someone did, yeah.
This is not a, uh, it, it, sir, it, well, I would suggest that you should not be on it as a counselor since you're appointing people. But if you have somebody that you think it's important to consider, please bring that forward. I don't, I don't.
So, so if someone wanted to be on this committee, they would do what? How would they show interest in it? They would come to Carol?
Yeah, to me, and I'd ring into the council.
Yeah.
And the town, town administrator doesn't, you wouldn't go to the town administrator, you'd go to the town. Thank you for my curiosity on that. I'm happy to, do we have a motion on a sec, I was gonna second it.
Thank you. The motions then made and seconded is a further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, ma'am.
I just got a comment, I think it's very sad that this year, the ponds in Wilbur were not stocked for fishing. So I love to speak over the.
Put fish in the ponds.
Yeah, you can get fish there, like, that's pretty sad to see, all being stocked or stocked.
Actually, part, part of the, part of the committee's, well, the major part of the committee's responsibility right now is we're trying to get the bridges rebuilt. And the reason they don't stock the pond anymore is because they can't get over the bridges with the trucks to put the trout in. So once we've restored the bridges, then they'll be able to restock the pond again. And anybody with fisheries experience, uh, would be greatly appreciated if one's to get on the committee. Turns out that, uh, D E M trumps the town, Coastal trumps D E M, and Fisheries trumps them all. So if you can prove that there's some kind of fish that's gonna get up in there, stuff like that, they don't care what any of those other organizations think, they'll, they will help you out.
They're gonna get kids back in their fishing.
Fair enough, thank you.
I would just, you know, that, uh, the CRMC has a D E M member on the council and we work with them at least by home. And if we had easy things, we, it will come over, it's kind of upset, so we would, uh, or a little pushing down there and making connections and blocking streams and things. And, uh, so if there's a problem, uh, we can certainly, just the connections through the CRMC could help, or push out D E M a little bit, a lot back.
Thank you.
See, he's already doing his job. What are a better appointee?
Uh, the motion then is made and seconded, is there further discussion? All in favor?
No.
Aye, thank you. The next item is to consider the impact of a new federal holiday, June nineteenth, or as it's referred to as Juneteenth, as it relates to two things. Municipal operations, I'm gonna propose that, since it is Monday, the twentieth of June, which is a week from this coming Monday, that we would not observe it in town hall on that Monday. We're not ready to accommodate, not that it's a big deal, but I don't see any reason for us to accommodate it this year. I would propose that we say, we're not going to observe it in the town on Monday, the twentieth of June. And employee contracts, I would ask that the town administrator return to us at a future meeting to describe for us what the impact is. What we've got is the addition of another federal holiday to a list of federal holidays, which are all named by name in most of our contracts. And so we need to decide, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna substitute, are we gonna add this to a flexible day, are we gonna take away one flex? It's just that mechanical, uh, process, and I think we need a little time to be able to do that with the, with the contracts.
I'll second that motion if the clerk can put that in the form of a motion, which I'm sure she can.
My motion is to not observe it in the town, at the town hall, obviously, the public safety complex is open regardless of whether it's holiday or not. Not observe it in the town hall in twenty twenty-two and request the administrator return to us with a recommendation with respect to modifications of employee contracts.
Second.
All right, now, discussion.
Is it, it's too soon to adjourn this year, there's too many, too many important moving parts.
Exactly, it, it's not something, I mean, we just negotiated three contracts and there was obviously after the fact, you know.
You'd have to open the contracts up to put.
Yeah, nothing's, nothing's in any of the contracts.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
No.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Next is to confirm membership in the fireworks committee. Here is my set of fireworks committee, I was asked to produce the list. I'm producing the list which says, Michael Rocha, a citizen, as the chair. Donald Gomez, you've heard him referred to recently, as a citizen. Paul Galumbeski, a counselor, Tony Texera, town administrator, Scott Rains, police chief, Richard Petron, fire chief, Curtis Cohane, public works foreman, David Van Gregor, recreation committee, Michael Focarelli, Village Improvement Society.
You need a motion to approve all those people beyond.
I just need to establish this as the, as the fireworks committee.
The fireworks committee shall consist of, uh, the, the name, yeah, names you just read. Believe me, I, I'm, like, time sensitive too.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Is there a date for that? I'm sorry, a date for the fireworks, I'm sorry.
Oh.
No, right, the attempt is just.
Generally in August. Excuse me, sir.
Hopefully, the meeting in prayer, it's the, uh, June, it's, uh, August sixth, which coincides with the seventy-seven annual, I guess, we had a, uh, Phil Compton, Village Improvement Society.
Said well. Do I take the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? A request from the recreation committee to allow up to three thousand dollars be used for purchase installation of a welcome sign for the recreational area of Meeting House Lane. My proposal to you would be, we have in this year's budget, two thousand dollars in signage in the Parks and Rec budget. And we have two thousand dollars in parks, in, uh, signs and signage in the twenty twenty-three budget. I would tell you that we could encumber two thousand dollars since we've spent none of it this year. We could encumber two thousand in FY twenty-two, add a thousand from FY twenty-three and cover this with budgeted funds.
You, uh, do you wanna get a vote?
Well, I'm just telling you what.
I'm happy to make that motion.
All right.
Second.
Discussion?
The motion, the motions made by Councilor McHugh, seconded by Councilor Hiriate, more, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
The sign ordinance, isn't, doesn't that bigger than our sign ordinance?
Isn't what bigger?
Our, our ordinance for the sign to put signs up, uh, our house? Is, is it twelve square feet?
Yeah.
So four by five, twenty?
Right, so you need to decide whether or not.
So are we gonna grant a variance to the sign ordinance?
We're not in the business of granting variances, but, but, uh, the question then becomes, uh, that conversation needs to be had with the building.
I mean, I don't have a problem with the sign at all, I just, you know, people can tend to throw stones for.
Can I just match, can I just go back? There's a nature conservancy sign erected there now, I don't know if it's over twelve feet or not, and I wasn't on the council if there was an or, it was a, uh, uh, so we can do that. Do you recall?
I don't, as a matter of fact, if I were to guess, I don't believe we were asked, the council.
An easement was the word I was looking, was that the word I'm looking for, easement? For the variance, variance, thank you.
Oh, variance, no, that would need to be taken to the zoning board. Yeah.
Maybe there was, uh, accepted practice, I don't know.
Well. Right.
Who are you?
I, it might not be.
We can make.
It might not be bigger than twelve, I don't know.
Right.
I don't know, I just know it's.
I would propose that the motion be made, subject to the approval of the zoning officials.
So, uh, no, whoever's got a made second.
Well, I think that he's gonna have to amend his motion. Man your motion.
Yes, I will recommend, uh, make a motion to, uh, three thousand dollars for a sign with, uh, a, uh, building inspector, uh, the zoning, zoning official.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, well done. Finally, authorize the town administrator advertise a request for proposal for janitorial services for three municipal buildings. Thirty-two Commons, which is down the road, down the hill, forty Commons in which you sit, and sixty Simmons, which is the public safety.
Motion to allow, second.
Motion to approve, all of, uh, is made and seconded, is a further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Communications, a request from Barbara Passmore for the town to purchase a new chairlift van for use of town residents to use, to be used to better assist the senior population. As you may be aware, there was some discussion with respect to the replacement of our previous van with a van that might have some, uh, capabilities and might not. This has clearly become the direction we are proceeding, and this is what we intend, is to bring to the council a proposal to acquire a van which is capable of lifting a wheelchair into it in order to assist the senior population. So the request from Mrs. Passmore is appreciated and is, as far as the administrator and I, uh, the direction we're going with this, is the direction we are going. And we do not intend to come to you with other than that kind of proposal.
Motion to place on file, second.
Discussion on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Invitation from Revolution Wind to attend an open house, this is on June thirteenth, which is Monday, for community residents and stakeholders in Rhode Island to learn more about its wind project. Councilor Mataronis, primarily, myself in a support role, have been following this project rather carefully. We do not, you, you, any citizen is obviously welcome to do this, you have to go over to Narragansett, first of all, you need to register in advance, then you go over to Narragansett for this open house and you can receive more information. We do not believe the impact of Revolution Wind on this particular project is significant to Little Compton.
Motion to place on file, second.
Yes.
Just a couple of minutes.
Yeah.
Uh, as you know, the offshore wind was a sign of, of women energy period, and that's what's drawing all these winter that's in the area. I hope to review and co-opt the ocean special area of harassment plan, which regulates all the offshore work, well, with Rhode Island and the determined area and in other areas. Revolution Wind is being put together by Austin, who is the president of the, of a company. Company, that did the Lock Island wind farm. And I have had many, many, many meetings with them and they are quite reasonable. Uh, a lot of the wind energy projects are not so. The impact that we have and I, I, part of my problem, I guess, I hang up people sometimes because I support the fishermen and I support the environment. There's a, a lot of environmental damage that's going to go on and the fishermen are being, uh, the New Bedford Scarlet grounds, for instance, the proposal is to put a wind turbine farm very large and though it's garlic, Cox's ledge where we have, we will set aside a breeding area for Austin's and the fishing stuff. So there is an impact. Uh, there's going to be at least two cables going up the Saginaw River that may impact us and we'll plan to get around the stone bridges and get up and on top from there. I just, I just wanna point out that, uh, we do have an Ocean Master Plan Committee. I am vice chair. Uh, and it's just one, one thing that I want to mention and you may or may not be aware, Rhode Island is the only state, uh, ocean state in the, in the union that has what is known as federal consistency. So we not only control three miles of state limit, but we control the various degrees as far out as we need to get with, with the different bans and different regulations on the new ban. Any project that we deem impacts Rhode Island. So that comes to C R M C, gets discussed and a lot of times we're even modifying what's going on. Massachusetts, for instance, doesn't have this. So whatever happens offshore, they have nothing to say about it. So I, I just wanted to point that out, that, uh, the C R M C takes us very seriously and we've been working on this for years, years, years. Uh, we're happy where we are. There are things going on out there like, uh, a series of turbines that are going up that are floating putting land on auto poles. They're gonna be driven into the ground and one of the things that happens with a shock wave, it kills off a screw problem, which, uh, you know, the biggest limitation on that. So I don't wanna take any more time, you know, it's getting late, but I just wanted to point out some factually, whatever. And I would like to attend the meeting as representative to the local.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, and your characterization, I would certainly concur with my, uh, with you. Thank you. The next item of business is application for renewal of a private detective license for Robert F. Skiffington.
Motion to approve, seeing this went through the, uh, chief of police and he concurs with this application. I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the license as reviewed and recommended by the chief of police. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Letter from the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation, seeking, uh, the Mass Rhode Island chapter, seeking permission to ride through town on September seventeenth.
Motion to approve was approved from the police chief and all necessary law, when state laws adhere to if necessary. Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. And a request to receive a, and to, uh, place on file, a withdrawal by Cynthia Rocha, general manager for Carol and Saginaw Vineyard, withdrawing their request for entertainment license.
Second.
Discussion. All, all in favor? The consent file.
Motion to place consent file on, uh, the consent calendar on file unless anybody has any questions.
I'd like to take something out of the consent file. Take number six, uh, number six, copy of a letter sent by Peter Maderas, building inspector. I have it here, I'll just read it. It's a short one. It was to Jeff Manning at Seventy-Six Shore Road. Says the subject property was issued a building permit thirty thirteen for a garage with a room above, including a hangout room, a bathroom, a bunk room and a mechanical room. Though, though table one B, table of accessory use regulations does not specifically permit the use of an accessory structure for sleeping purposes, it has been allowed as an accepted practice in previous years. Uh, Peter Maderas, building inspector. So I'm not gonna get into tables and sections and the ordinances and I'll leave that for other people. Happy to listen to it. But as a regular guy, uh, sitting in the audience, regular person, it looks like to me, Mr. Manning's question, um, that he asked, he was proven correct. And it says table accessory use regulation does not specifically permit the use of an accessory structure for sleeping purposes. And then it goes on to say it's been allowed and accepted practice. So I think accepted practice means, you know, hey, it, it's happened before. And, you know, if you wanna get a lawyer and you wanna spend thousands of dollars and, and fight it and go for it, anyone, not Jeff Manning, I guess, anybody, any person. So that's what I see. I know Jeff's here today, he may wanna speak on it, uh, so I wanted to bring it up.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Jeff Manning, anyone to talk about. Actually, thank you very much for giving us, uh, a little two weeks around the last. My request had been taken a year ago. Uh, and I actually agree completely with Peter's assessment that it's not permitted. So it's now, uh, in agreement with my assessment that it's not permitted use. Now it becomes a matter of course, uh, Peter. It's clear, it's not permitted, it's not allowed. So what's the next step? How, well, the building official's probably quite taken basically thousands. Then it's not permitted use. My second question, I've never heard of this doctrine of accepted practice. It was capitalized as if it's a formal title. It appears nowhere in our zoning ordinance, it appears nowhere in Rhode Island general laws, and I can't find a tertiary book, I need a case law that, uh, mentions accepted practice. The fact that it's capitalized, I was curious as to what that was trying to say to me when I was reading that letter. But irregardless of that, we're a town that's one on zoning board that's not accepted practice. I mean, accepted practice, why even have a common plan, zoning board review, the zoning ordinance, if you're just wanting to have accepted practices? I'm very curious as to how that answer would be sufficient, sort of backing up. Paul's already admitted it's not permitted use. So I'd like the town to come to a lay-in on that because the letter I have in hand, agreed by assessment that, that property is not, the cited property is not permitted use. Going forward, how are we gonna tackle this, uh, tricky situation? It would seem the cleanest and most efficient way is to go through the public hearing process to be end zoning if that's the so-called, that's what they wanna take. But creating a doctrine that I've never heard of before, to justify a decision, seems, uh, wrong.
Barely said. I can't speak to why he capitalized the two words. I would agree with you that I would, were I to compose this, would have made them, it is an accepted practice, not something that you don't, you haven't looked at the accepted practice table? In other words, I don't think that was the intention of that, that. But I'll ask the administrator, who's worked this a bit, to talk about where we go from here.
Well, first of all, just a correction on the time. There was a statement made that the zoning official did not reply within the timeline. There was, uh, that's required. And, uh, what happened was that when Mr. Manning sent the information to Mr. Maderas, he had left, that was actually, his first day of vacation, so he was not here in town when he received that communication. That was actually related back to Mr. Manning. I did see a communication that Mr. Maderas pointed that out. So I need to clarify that. It was not by the mere fact that he did not wanna do it or did not wanna comply. It was the fact that he was absent from the country, actually, at the time. He was already on vacation when he received that communication. So I need to clarify that because at the last meeting, it was assumed there was a lack of interest or response, uh, on the part of the building official.
I object to that. I, I said, uh, I said the letter on August fourth and, um, I received a response that copied secretary of zoning board. It was, and that was, I think, August forty, I think, twenty-second or twenty-sixth. It was about a twenty-two day window. So I understand people get vacations, uh, but that was a long vacation. And I think, you know, when the town official is, is on or meets on vacation, there should be some type of notification that, that individual's gone because not all zoning just stops when one individual is out of town. So there needs to be at least, I'm out of town. I'm a very fair individual, you know, and, and like Jack mentioned earlier, I tend to agreeable. I mean, I, so I, I disagree with that sort of take on events. And my first, uh, outreach, and I don't wanna get into this, this is cool, but I would hear, my first outreach to building officials was in April of twenty twenty-one, when I sent a generalized email asking about structures that contain sleeping quarters and I had never received a response. Not until I initiated a report through three one, formal request, that's neither here nor there. Now, two weeks, uh, three weeks ago, I was in these chambers and, uh, again, thank you very much, you were able to get an answer for me and you came within two weeks. So I think the timeline kinda says there was some stalling there. It took the town council to get involved, so I would get a reply. Either way, it doesn't matter. Now I have replied, I agree with the reply. He agreed for me, it's not permitted use. So the whole, the ordinance is clear. It's not permitted, it's not allowed. With all sorts of, uh, subsections in enforcement chapter fourteen-nine that back up what should happen after this. So I'm, I don't understand justifying it with this whole law document called accepted practice. We, we make decisions on a zoning board, not an accepted practice. That throws the whole, whole machinery out of whack. How do, how does a zoning board review function on accepted practice? They, they function on zoning to work on, on a comprehensive plan, I was a planning board on, on accepted practice. What does that mean? And if there's no justification, I can't find it in any, uh, like I said, I, it was never mentioned in our town zoning ordinance, not mentioned in Rhode Island general laws, and I can't find it in any case law. So are we running on a zoning ordinance or are we running on an accepted practice? I don't understand what that means.
I believe it's as simple as the fact that the practice of many people is to allow people to sleep in portions of their property without someone else deciding where it is that they can sleep on their property. Yours and my conversation has been that, that the concern here, and rightfully so, is that if a person were to have a prop, have a portion of his property that he would be able then to subsequently give to somebody else, even if he weren't there and had nothing to do with him, that that's a, that's a reasonable concern. As to whether or not a person is able to sleep in a particular part of his, of his housing project, if I can use that broader term. In other words, the, the structure that the person puts together and, and allows someone to sleep somewhere is not governed, in my opinion, by our zoning ordinance. But to your point, that's why we have the ability to say, I don't agree with that. I think I should be able to argue that.
But there's a principal use and an accessory, accessory use is supposed to be interventional for the principal use. If the accessory uses contains, uh, you know, basically a mini drive version of dwelling, they serve the same purpose. The, the, the use table one B of accessory structures, no, they wanted to say, you can sleep in a tool shed, you can sleep in a carport, you can do whatever you want, they would say that, they would say that.
It's not sleeping quarters, a copy of the plan that was provided for us says, provide for the one bedroom guest suite. That's not sleeping quarters, that's.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm speaking to.
Plan that had a bedroom. And people may have, you know, maybe going on, people may build an accessory structure in, call it a office or an art studio, but to my knowledge, this is the first time the town has approved, yes, a bedroom in an accessory structure is permitted. And it's either permitted for everyone or alone. It's right now, it's in the code, it's not, it's not specifically listed and it's not permitted. And if it's not permitted and it's still issued a permit, that permit, then according to zoning, is not allowed.
Okay.
Basically, anything on a normalized letter, accepted practices, I, I think they're a danger to, I think we have to report back to our town ordinance because accepted practice has been guarded by us. I could very well take this in my front yard because farmers used to do it fifty years ago. I could build a gentleman's club in my backyard, call it a house, as long as it's an accepted practice. I mean, how do you, how do you wanna tell that?
It's, it's the duty of the building official to interpret and enforce the provisions of his own chapter. That's it. And I noticed actually, as I was sitting here tonight, that charter doesn't even have other than town officials, it doesn't even list the building official, it only lists the contractors. So that, let's put that on, the doctor, for the next time you have to get the charter. But the building official isn't authorized to make decisions on anything other than, um, the certification and enforcement.
I'm not, I'm not intending to dismiss your issue. I think you're completely right in bringing it forward. I'm only suggesting why the response you've gotten may be what it is. We, I will direct the town administrator to have the building official review this and to respond to you again.
And, I mean, there's an enforcement part of the, of that job. And he, that letter that I have that sends me that's on public record, reads that it's not permitted.
Correct.
It confirms right back to what happens under fourteen-three-one, if something is not permitted, it's not allowed. So to, to, to defend that with some new doctrine that I've never heard of, that's, I know I've brought that up, it seems defensible. The way to change zoning, we're not here to oppose anything, we're here to say, you gotta follow the zoning. Again, there's a process, you know, whatever that I do, the, the zoning ordinance, you know, if you have some language change, put it out there, have the public hearing and move on from there. Just making things up, uh, seems not the way to go, you know? Because you can't go back in time and find the ordinance or a statute or anything to back up a decision if it's created, that's a character out of it. I don't understand that. It doesn't seem like, it, it doesn't seem a fair answer.
It's not ethical or transparent for all of towns, that's why we have the zoning protests. The principle of, I think I said, said at our last meeting, our town zoning is one house per lot. The other foundation of our town is that if we have zoning, thank God, because here we are, we all live in a small town. We have zoning ordinance, it's a good reason and a town can change it, but they are what they are, they should not look.
I accept your criticism of what has happened and I will commit to you that I will work to satisfy your request.
Bob, do we need any other, uh, sort of from the committee for you to do that or you're going to do that with, you're gonna charge the building, I mean, the charge to town administrator yourself? You don't need us to vote on that or anything?
You're welcome to, I don't need that. You're welcome to, uh, to do so if you think that's important. Yep.
I think you're right.
You're welcome. I'm sorry, the answer is incomplete.
Well, I just, and, uh, well, I, I agree with the answer. It's the fact that the answer will be enforced. And then the second half of this, this finalized, formalized, uh, mention of something called accepted practice, which in my two previous responses, we never mentioned, uh, now it just popped up in public record and any other, I wouldn't. Texts, and this is, so it seems kind of odd to me, uh, so.
Were you about to say something?
Yeah.
Is there then a motion to?
Motion to place the consent calendar on file, including item six. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Payment of bills.
Motion to pay the bills. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
There being no further matters before us, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.